Yeah, yeah, actually, I was working from home today. And I watched the Lewis working all the time. I've been to two different places all the time. So.
Okay, okay.
It was the week before I was, I fell asleep in the chair and woke up and I thought, we still are. And that was like four or five.
Meeting called to order, please. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the reasonable, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Mia Chow.
Here.
Ms. Chun.
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Delay.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to recognize some of my favorite people in the world who are the teachers. And teachers always have a special place in my heart. As we, I mentioned earlier, we had a celebration for all the retired teachers in the mayor's reception room. And now it's my honor to recognize you here in the chamber. I'm going to briefly call out your names if you can come up to the podium. And then we'll have you come in, we'll take pictures with all the school committee members. I would like to recognize Ms. Catherine Burke, also known as Beautiful Lady from the Wang School.
Thank you.
Ms. Anna Cruz from the Riley Schools. Ms. Burke, you can continue to stand there because we're going to have you come in. Ms. Burke, just stand up there, yeah, so you don't go back. Ms. Anne Marie Callen from the Stumm Academy. Great school, thank you for your service to the Stumm Academy. Ms. Maureen Seyer from the Riley, 25 years. That is just amazing, and I want to thank you for your years of services to the school, to the children, to the families, and to the city. Before I have you come into inside the chamber, I don't know if any of the school committee members would like to say anything. If not, please come in, we'll take a photos.
Okay. We go, we go in.
Wow. This one.
Congratulations.
You guys are great.
So many great people.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah. It's like a cocktail.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
We now go to three, the minutes. Need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of June 1st, 2022, and a special meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of June 9th, 2022, to place them on file by Ms. Mon, second by Mr. Lay, on the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We now go to four. Permission to enter, June 15th. Any comments on permission to enter? Here will not need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Doherty. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mia Chow.
Yes.
Ms. Chun.
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Delay.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
4.2, Chief Financial Officer Assistant Superintendent Billy Joe Turner contract approval. Any comment, any questions from any of the members? Here will not need a motion to approve the contract for Chief Financial Officer Assistant Superintendent Billy Joe Turner by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Chun. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mia Chow.
Yes.
Ms. Chun.
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Delay.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
4.3, Chief Equity Engagement Officer Assistant Superintendent Latifah Phillips contract approval. Any comments or question? Here will not need a motion to approve the contract for Chief Equity and Engagement Officer Assistant Superintendent Latifah Phillips by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Rossi. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mia Chow.
Yes.
Ms. Chun.
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Delay.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
I want to congratulate both Billy Joe and Latifah, and we look forward to continue working with both of you. We now go to five. Memorials. 5.1 is Mas Deschard, also known as Mason Deschard from the Merklin School Student. Carrie DeRosa is Shaughnessy School professional, paraprofessional. Edward Foley Jr., brother of Thomas Foley from Stumm Academy teacher. John Jeffers, brother of Sue Gannon, Wang School cafeteria worker. And I would also like to add the mother of Mason Deschard, Boa Deschad, as well. Mr. Superintendent, please dim the light. We'll start with 6.1. Motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent provide a report by June 17th on the total number of windows by school that still need to be replaced or repaired, as well as those still needing screens and shades. The report should include information on the window improvements completed over the last year, an explanation as to why we still have window issues, and a timeline and plan for repair, second by Ms. Mon. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to point out that I originally made a motion regarding the window screens and shades on June 16th, 2021. I was, I knew it was going to be tight to get things in place for summer school, but it seemed like that was the low lying fruit in terms of our ventilation needs at the time. Most recently, on June 1st, the Facility Subcommittee met, which my colleagues all have the minutes of that meeting in our packet tonight. At that time, we were presented with analysis of, by school, a number of things that were needed, but not a total number. Like, said, the Butler School needs windows, the Shaughnessy School, but no complete number. And at that time, that evening, I requested that this full information be prepared for us because we have another meeting, a joint city council school committee meeting on facilities, happening Tuesday. I don't want to go before my colleagues on the council without that full information. So that's why you'll see tonight's motion, because in addition to asking for it at the meeting, which is in the minutes of the meeting tonight, which I spoke about on the floor, I wanted to make sure we had something before we go before the city council subcommittee on Tuesday. So that's my intention with this motion. I really would like to get a full understanding of what windows we've already repaired and what still needs to be done and why we're not doing it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Thompson?
Um, I was, wow, this is really loud, sorry. I was just, I was actually at that meeting as well, just curious as to, has there been some measure of, of advance on this? Is there partial? I mean, I get Ms. Doherty wanting that information because it's important to have that, so I was just curious. I mean, I don't know how long it takes to turn around these reports, but I'm just curious, has there been partial work done? Maybe is there a half of list of schools or something to that, to that magnitude? So I'm not sure how long it takes to do a report.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has requested, they believe a reasonable turnaround for this type of report is June 30th as opposed to June 17th. That's been the request to staff. I don't personally compile the reports. I do have the available information that's available for distribution if the committee would like it tonight. I just would tell you, this is provided by staff without any vetting or validation that typically occurs before information is provided directly to the committee. But there are 697 screens that have been replaced across the district, as well as 70 window panes across the current year with another 180 that are planned for replacement during the summer of '22. There is, this work happens across with our maintenance department, as well as the City Department of Public Works and a vendor. So compiling these reports in a timely way requires cross coordination across departments as well as the vendor. The reasonable timeframe for providing the report as requested, which was provided to me by staff, is approximately two weeks. However, if a partial response is acceptable to the committee, again, knowing I can, I can vet this, what I have today, I can vet this tomorrow and get it to the committee by timeline, but it's not a complete version of what I think is requested within the motion. So I would give that option to the committee. We can stay with timeline, receiving partial information, it seems, or we can, the staff is saying they can reply in full in two weeks.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to, again, reiterate that the original motion was a year ago, that the most recent, other than this one, was stated at the June 1st Facility Subcommittee meeting. It is my intention to go before the city council with as much information as possible, recognizing that they are partners in getting this work done. That my, I'm not trying to blow anybody up or give you too much work. I would request that we say Monday, because we need 48 hours notice. Oh, no, that won't work. The meeting is Tuesday. The joint, so I would say, give us as much as you can give us by the end of the day, Friday, but I really don't think this is a short turnaround. This is, was reemphasized on June 1st, which is a full two weeks from the date, the 17th. I just followed up by having it in writing as a motion, just to be sure that we got the information, because I've made multiple attempts to get it. I've just tried to get my hands on what exactly we're facing as a city in terms of these repairs we need to our schools. And I don't have to tell you, it was, it's been in the eighties this week. We are planning to have summer school at every one of our schools. So I think this information is timely, that we have to have it as soon as possible. So that, I would say, give us the best you can on Friday, but I don't think that it's an unreasonable expectation, given the motion originated a year ago.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I think there's, so thank you. I think the information is definitely valuable to not only the committee, but the community as a whole. Just typically, when we establish deadlines, we ask those who are responsible for meeting the deadlines, what's a reasonable turnaround, understanding the other work that's in front of them, particularly in closing out the school year. But I think there is some important information that I was provided to help the committee understand the environment we're in as it relates to the supply chain issues across the country. So our maintenance department, in collaboration with the City's Department of Public Works, is citing two important data points that are really almost difficult to comprehend, as they, as they put it. An order of 15 pallets of paper towels in, prior to COVID, would have been delivered within three to four days. Now, we have to anticipate four to six weeks for that delivery. A commercial glass replacement would typically ship within 10 to 14 days, but during COVID, these numbers are now six weeks to several months to, for delivery. So I think the observations and certainly, hence, your desire for additional updated information is extremely valid. Here, I believe it's, it's staff wanting to make sure that they can provide to you what has been done, what is still outstanding, and make sure that the prior reports, which are no, which are certainly outdated, actually do reflect the work that's happening, and given it works across outside vendors, as well as the Department of Public Works and our maintenance office, to assess all of the, all of the work that's happening across all of our buildings. I think that's what's, that's, that's the request for additional time to make sure they're giving you valid information, to make sure they're working in concert with our partners that do the work within our schools. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or question? Here will not, maybe I could just make a small suggestions, and you might be thinking about already, Mr. Superintendent, but maybe each school, they have a maintenance person, maybe they can help out in identifying some of the windows, or maybe, you don't need a complete information, but just an idea of what's happened done, what's needed and so forth, right, Ms. Doherty? It's not a final list, but some kind of a draft, so that way you can present that to the council subcommittee. Ms. Doherty?
If I could just respond to that.
Sure.
At the Subcommittee meeting on June 1st, we were given a report, itemized by school, that listed what some of the needs were. And that's where it first jumped out at me, windows, windows, windows. So each school should know what they need. And I, so again, I'm looking for the most complete information that we can possibly get before we meet with our colleagues on Tuesday.
Sure, I understand. I just want to throw in a caveat, maybe, might not be the final information, but it'd be some information, if that's okay with you, Ms. Doherty. Thank you. Any other comments or question? On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. 6.2, motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent provide a report on the vacancy savings line items in the budget. How much is in it and what are the positions that were not filled, second by Mr. Rossi. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think, you know, we mentioned, we did a transfer at the last meeting, and I had asked where, what line item it came from, and that was where the superintendent responded, vacancy savings. And I'm just looking to see, you know, one point, and it might not have been this committee, it might have been the prior committee, we voted, I want to say, 28 social workers to add. We had big numbers, we were trying to increase. So I'm looking for something that tells us how much is in that account, but also, what are the positions that we filled or that we didn't fill that are, you know, causing that number? Because I think it's important for us to know, as a committee, what, what positions are still out there that we haven't been able to fill, and then, for whatever reason. So that's what I'm looking for, in case it wasn't clear. Thank you.
No other comments? On the favor say aye, opposed say no, Mr. Rossi, you have a comment?
Yes, I just had a quick comment about when I had went over the personnel list, that it was, it seemed as though we had lost 30-something teachers, but hired close to 28 pairs, and only hired like 15 teachers, something to that effect. So if we could get a ratio as to how many teachers that we've lost as compared to The ayes have it, motions carry. Six point two, motion by Ms. Doherty, request the Superintendent provide a report on the vacancy savings line items in the budget. How much is in it and what are the positions that were not filled? Second by Mr. Rossi. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think, you know, we mentioned, we did a transfer at the last meeting, and I had asked where, what line item it came from, and that was where the Superintendent responded, vacancy savings. And I'm just looking to see, you know, one point, and it might not have been this committee, it might have been the prior committee, we voted, I want to say, 28 social workers to add. We had big numbers, we were trying to increase. So I'm looking for something that tells us how much is in that account, but also what are the positions that we filled or that we didn't fill that are, you know, causing that number? Because I think it's important for us to know, as a committee, what, what positions are still out there that we haven't been able to fill, and then for whatever reason. So that's what I'm looking for, in case it wasn't clear. Thank you.
No other comments? On favor, say aye, opposed, say no. Mr. Rossi, you have a comment?
Yes, I just had a quick comment about when I had went over the personnel list, that it was, it seemed as though we had lost 30 something teachers, but hired close to 28 pairs and only hired like 15 teachers, something to that effect. So if we could get a ratio as to how many teachers that we've lost as compared to how many teachers we've gained, how many pairs we've lost, how many pairs we've gained, just for equitability, equitability purposes? Thank you.
No other comments? We have the on favor, say aye already, opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motions carry. We now go to six point three. Motion by Ms. Thompson to the Superintendent to have the culmination, culmination of Civics Day to include a day of meeting in the chambers with the school committee to further the content of your projects, to gain community knowledge and support, and to present your ask of the committee, and to include City Council, if permissible by the mayor. Second by Ms. Churn, Ms. Thompson?
So as we saw, Civics Day is fantastic day, and I think that we, as the people who are elected officials, need to take it a step further. I think we need to have a day where all the, those who choose to, that have done projects, are able to come into the chambers and potentially ask of this body, this elected body, what it is they would like for us to do, to give us suggestions. Because I do believe that the children have fantastic suggestions, they're able to bring things to the table that we wouldn't think about. So I think we need to create a day for them to come to the chamber to ask of both City Council and School Committee what they may. Thank you.
Great motion. Any other comments? I do agree with that, and I will present this to the council body as well. Here, no other comments? On favor, say aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motions carry. We now go to seven subcommittees. Seven point one, Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I did report out on this at our last meeting, but I just would like to remind the committee and the Superintendent regarding a motion we had on June first, and that was a motion by Ms. Del Rossi, to have the top HVAC concerns in our school buildings be compiled in a list, so the Facility Subcommittee can bring it to the City Council Facility Subcommittee when they meet. Seconded by Mr. Lay, three ayes approved. So we brought that forward to the committee as a motion, and I just, that again, is for the meeting we have next week. I want to be able to come forward, when I meet with my colleagues on the council, and say, these are priority concerns, because then we can start to work out a plan to get them completed. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Thompson?
I also attended that meeting, and I was concerned about the entry points. There were 12 schools, I believe, that had door entry points, and that was a huge concern, especially with what's going on in the country. We need to make sure that the, the schools are as secure as possible, which actually does coincide with the windows and the screens, because, again, they need to be able to hide or shelter in place if they do need to, so, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Sorry, I forgot that. That was also a very good point that Ms. Thompson brought forward. And, and again, I want to work with the city together to make these things happen, but we're looking at June, and we're going to have summer school throughout the city, happening in a very few weeks, and it's going to be hot. We need to make sure the kids are safe and they can have air, and that it's not ridiculously hot. Thank you.
Ms. Churn?
I have a question. Is there any other short term resolution to help solve, especially with the whole air situation where, again, we don't want to lose our students because of the, the heat and the exhaustion in the classroom? Is there any other way, or the resolution that we can come up to help resolve that issue until the time that we find the actual, you know, permanent solution? So that's just my question, where I, you know, would like to have that answered as well. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, any comment currently?
Yeah, thank you. So I've been really pleased with the partnership with new city manager, Golden, and I've also been hearing really positive reports of interim Commissioner Mark Byrne at the Department of Public Works. So my understanding is that we're working in concert and in partnership with the Department of Public Works, and I'm, I'm confident that if there is a solution to be found, our partners at the city will find that solution in maintaining our buildings. Those are constant and ongoing conversations, and I know our maintenance department has been in discussion with them to make sure that we can meet the needs of our children. That's the most I can provide right now, but I am, I am really pleased, I will say, with the partnership so far with all of our city departments under the leadership of City Manager Golden.
No other comments? Need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Lay. On favor, say aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motions carry. Seven point two, Policy and Governance Subcommittee Meeting. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I reported out on this meeting at our last meeting, so I just offered it as a report of progress.
Okay. No other comment? Need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Mon. On favor, say aye, opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motions carry. We now go to eight reports of the Superintendent. Eight point one, May Bias-Based Incident Report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This was an ongoing request from committee member Thompson as part of a motion that she filed earlier in the year. This report is submitted as a report of progress. If there are any questions, Ms. Phillips heads up this work for us and is prepared to answer any questions the committee may have. Otherwise, it's submitted as a report of progress.
Any other comments, questions? Here, none. We go to eight point two, Secondary School Redesign Update. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. We're really excited to share with you an update on our ongoing work to improve secondary education across our community. Head of School, Fiatto, is with us this evening. Will share with the committee the status of this work, and I am also pleased to share with the committee that a next step in operationalizing our efforts here will be a conversation around a revision to our graduation requirements. It has been several decades since the committee's engaged in an update to its graduation requirement policy. We believe the time is right. Mr. Fiatto, Ms. Desmond, their teams have been working to bring to the committee an updated graduation requirement that aligns with both 21st century skills, as well as the Mass Core framework, to ensure that our students are provided with post-secondary opportunities and are ready for college, truly ready for college and career based on the requirements in high school. I'm really proud of the work that's happening at our high school. We had 715 students that graduated. All of you were in, in attendance, and I feel really confident that our children are prepared for college and career based on the work that's happening in the school. This is a natural progression as part of our redesign to engage in an update to the graduation requirements. You're not going to be asked to take that action tonight, but we felt it was valuable for you to hear about the work that's happening in anticipation of that discussion into the summer. So Mr. Fiatto's here, prepared to share with you an update, and we also thought it might be an opportune time, given that you just saw the graduating class last week, that if there are any questions of Mr. Fiatto about our secondary school redesign work, he's also available to answer any of those questions. He did dress quite nicely for tonight, given the work of June in a high school as a principal. So I know he's prepared to be on the TV, because a principal in June doesn't typically come dressed in a suit and tie in the evening. So Mr. Fiatto, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing my, my taste in fashion and also the hard work that's happening at the high school. Before we get started, I did want to congratulate our boys volleyball team. If you had a chance to follow the team, they made it to the final four of the state tournament. They were, they had one loss, they were 19-1. Coach McCarthy got Coach of the Year. Several of our players received All-Star, MVP accolades. We lost to a very tough Westford Academy team, and that team is, has a history of winning. So they, our, our young people have nothing to be ashamed of. They worked really hard. And also, just to really thank all of you who have been, were involved in the graduation ceremony and had a chance to attend. We had a lot of positive feedback on the ceremony. Things worked well at the Songus Arena, but more importantly, our, our students had a very classy, dignified, yeah, I think a little bit of fun at our graduation. So we did get some positive feedback on that. So thank you for being here today. My goal here tonight is to share with you the presentation, a presentation on our proposed vision, to outline the need for change, tell you about our current work, and explain to you how all of our initiatives will be aligning, so that we're not competing with initiatives, but really showing an alignment with all that we're doing. Talk about some next steps. And I did want to give a brief LHS construction project update, although I'm not responsible for construction. I think our community deserves to know that we're on track to, to have a new gym in the fall, and all of the work that will happen post the gym construction. So our proposed vision summary is, is, is much, very much in line with what Dr. Boyd just said about making sure that our students graduate with the post-secondary skills to prepare them for college, career, and life. The core work is, that we're doing is, is to ensure that they have, that our students have the skills, competencies, experiences, and dispositions to be successful after graduation. So the goal is not simply a diploma. We gave out 750, 715 diplomas. We want to make sure those diplomas mean something, that it's a guarantee that our students and community, to our students and community, that a diploma will lead to a pathway for success at Lowell High School, in both college, career, work, and life. So our work is guided by six, the six core competencies that are outlined in the Community Wide Portrait of a Graduate Initiative, which are mind, heart, network, leadership, spirit, and skill. So let's look at our current graduation requirements. As Dr. Boyd said, it's, it's been a while since these graduation requirements have been revisited. So we're striving to, to meet the, to, to actualize the vision of POG by aligning our core content, core course completion with our Portrait of a Graduate, to make sure that all of the subject matter play an integral role in preparing students for success after high school. So it's an equity issue to ensure that all students have access and opportunity for all, not just for some students. It's our goal to increase the rigor and relevance of our graduation requirements and reimagine the high school experience to align with those demands of the 21st century. Now, I have spoken to many Lowell High staff and community members, and have learned that the graduation requirements have not been significantly changed in many years. Some tell me it's been decades that these requirements have been changed, and any substantive changes have taken place. But as you know, a lot of, a lot of things have changed with regards to the world of work. Soft skills, technical skills previously not a prerequisite for a job or a career in the past are now an essential, are essential today for post-secondary success. As a high school and as a community, we need to make sure that our innovations to graduation requirements reflect these changes, so that our students have every opportunity to succeed in the ever-changing global economy. So some of the reasons that I think it's, we think it's really important to propose a change in the graduation requirements include, but are not limited to, some of these important facts. One is a kind of a shocking fact, when we did some research on how many, what percent of classes do students need to pass in order to earn a diploma over four years? And that is 64%. So a student can only, a student can pass, can, can pass 64% of classes and still graduate. I don't think that's the type of guarantee that we want for our community, to make sure that our students graduate college and career ready. But other, other opportunities, such as competing with area high schools and ramping up our graduation requirements, so that our students have those same opportunities. To improve alignment with non-remedial college entrance requirements, so our students don't have to take developmental classes in college, wasting time and money. And to provide options for students who are not heading to college right after high school, increase exposure to advanced level coursework, and increase our Mass Core completion rates. We'll, what we will propose to do this in a thoughtful way, in a phased approach, so that our school community and families will know what changes are coming, but also allow us the time to make the necessary adjustments to adapt to the technical and adaptive challenges that these changes will present. So as you can see from this table that I have before you, it's an outline of the course require, the course graduation requirements for Lowell High School Mass, comparing Mass Core to the Mass State Grad University System. So under our current model, to graduate from LHS, a student must take two years of math to meet Mass Core, and the Mass University System is four years. As you can see, we go through this matrix, and you'll see that the Mass Core and Mass University System is, is a much more rigorous course of study than what Lowell High has at this current time. To meet the Mass Core, so why the need for change? This slide here depicts some of the key reasons why changing grad requirements are necessary. More academically challenging coursework. Mass Core completion, if, if you're not familiar with Mass Core, it's, it's, it's a set of courses that are prescribed by the Department of Education, that if a student takes these courses, the likelihood that they can be successful in college, career, and life are greatly increased, based on some of the latest research. And we want to make sure that our students have those opportunities. And also to increase performance on MCAS, AP exams, and other performance tasks, and equitable access to the Mass State University Systems. Again, if our students aren't taking four years of math, or if they're not taking three, four years of science or a world language, they're running against other students who graduate with, from high schools that have ramped up their graduation requirements, and also the opportunity, the likelihood that many students will be faced with taking remedial coursework, which takes time and also money from their Pell Grant and from their financial aid. And many students that I've come in contact with that have to take what they call remedial developmental courses, don't end up matriculating, and they don't end up finishing, because they just get discouraged. So we need to be able to set our students up for success and not, not, not failure, and it's about persistence for that diploma, if they do go on to higher ed. So let me share with you a little bit about our current work. In order to meet the, in order for, to continue to meet our school-wide goals, as outlined in our school improvement plan, we'll continue to do a, a few things, but we think, we believe if we do these things well, and not over, overburden ourselves with multiple initiatives, these are high-leverage goals that will continue to align and align our work with the graduation requirements and also with the Portrait of a Graduate. And that includes aligning our instructional practices and instructional frameworks to ensure consistency. So if you walk into a classroom at Lowell High School, we want to ensure that there's consistency, not necessarily requiring teachers to have to teach the same way or to teach the same things, as long as they're aligned with their common, with the Common Core standards, but to make sure that our students are having equitable experiences across grade levels and across subject areas. We also want to continue to promote writing in every classroom, every day, using a common rubric, and increase, this year, we've, more than, more than ever, I really am excited about the work happening with access to student-level data with our new data analyst. We, we've increased the amount of student-level data to progress monitor student performance and provide interventions as needed. And infusing, ultimately, we'll be infusing the Portrait of a Graduate competencies into the curriculum, beginning with a curriculum audit. So where do the competencies fall within, say, a science class with regards to mind, spirit, heart? How do we ensure that those students have those opportunities, not only to learn the importance of the Common Core and the science standards, but also those 21st century skills to make the, the learning more relevant? Again, lining initiative, aligning initiatives, it's, it's important for our school community to know that all of this takes place in, in unison, and in a, in a way that is, is aligning our initiatives with existing projects. So like, like I explained earlier, we are in a, we are still in a turnaround status. So we have a sustainable improvement plan, and we continue to work with our instructional leadership team to meet all of our state requirements and meet those goals that are put before us. The Portrait of a Graduate is a school-wide initiative, and that's kind of the North Star of our work. Graduation Requirement Examination, so today before you, I really want to signal the need for change and have you consider, if, if we consider moving this forward, we'll work through the Superintendent to make that happen. Writing across content areas and really increasing the amount of instructional discourse. Well, we noticed that coming back from a pandemic and students having an overreliance on their technology over the last few months of being out of school, we, we want to make sure that our students are actively involved, not only with writing, but also engaging in discourse and dialogue. So we'll be continuing to work on that in the, in the next year. Let me continue with a few more staircases to the POG completion. This, this slide is a representation of the timeline and a full realization of POG integration, which, which is phased in and gradual, and will lead to a goal of 100% Mass Core completion by 2029. Our proposed changes to the grad requirements would start with a class of 2026, next year's ninth graders, with gradual changes each year to allow for programmatic and organizational shifts to align with additional coursework. For the class of 2026-27, we propose the addition of one math, one lab, science, and one additional social studies course. These would be requirements, but should not change the trajectory for students. For example, most students already take three years of social studies, math, and science, but they're not required to pass them. You will note that we're also seeking to increase fine arts offerings, and will encourage students to take these courses to expand their skills and to move towards a more comprehensive educational experience and Mass Core compliance. As we look ahead to the class of 2028, we'll shift towards Algebra II as a requirement. We'll seek additional planning years, so we can increase vertical alignment with our middle schools. Additionally, we seek to, we seek to make one fine arts course a requirement for the class of 2028. Finally, for the class of 2029, we seek to fully realize the Portrait of a Graduate with the addition of a senior seminar, Portrait of a Graduate Performance Assessment, which would be really exciting for students to be able to demonstrate their four years of learning at Lowell High School, and walk away with some sort of an action research project or a research project. or a research project. And that would be something that we'd like to execute by 2029. And proposed changes for the class of 2029? The proposal calls for a fully-developed revision of graduation requirements to be realized by the class of 2029. We believe we can do this in a phased-in approach, and by allowing time to work with our faculty and our school community, we believe we can make that happen. If you haven't seen, many, most of you on, on the school committee and the community have seen the Portrait of a Graduate flyer, and I want to make sure that it's, it's understood that it's a vision for skills and competencies that the Lowell community believes is some, is a, are competencies that our students should possess before they graduate, and it's the North Star of the transformation. Why POG? Increasing critical thinking opportunities. Again, we know that 21st century skills require our students to be able to think and to be adaptive, to change, not to tell them what to think, but to really teach them how to think and give them those experiences within the classroom that allow them to do that. Collaboration is key. We can't teach in isolation, and students really need to learn how to work together, not only for a better, not a better job, but also for a better society. And students taking own ownership of their learning. Many students do take ownership of their learning, but some still need some support with self-efficacy to be able to advocate for themselves and to, to, to learn how to be creative, curious, and to advocate for themselves. So here's the, what we will consider a roadmap, starting with this year. This slide, this, this, this slide depicts our roadmap for change, leading to the destination of a reimagined LHS. Again, tier-one instruction, updating curriculum maps and outlining POG competencies, which has started this year, organizational restructuring and additional support staff, introducing graduation requirements to incoming ninth graders, enhancing grad requirements and access to advanced coursework to promote equity and excellence. I'm sorry, I want to go back to one. I did want to talk about the instructional redesign or some modified changes that we believe that could support really bringing Lowell High School together, both instructionally and with our school climate. One area is reimagining the dean role to that of assistant principal and adding one student support specialist to each house office. We worked closely with our school site council to get some new positions moved forward so that we can support our students with all of the demands of the, of the, this, this, the social-emotional supports that are definitely needed for our students, and we, our school site council was great in identifying some of those major areas. But in terms of the dean role, each dean currently oversees attendance, academic behavior, and social-emotional needs of about 600 students. They manage their house teams, two clerks, two guidance counselors, and one social worker. But at present, the deans don't play a significant role in instructional leadership, which creates a disconnect between the classroom and student support. The shift of assistant principal would lessen the disconnect and better align LHS with LPS staffing models. Shifting from a dean to assistant principal will, will create the opportunity, as we, we bring on a student support specialist for each house, will allow us to take the first step in really truly breaking down the, a large school into smaller learning communities to personalize the experience while, while holding on to the best of LHS, which gives us the opportunity for students to take multiple courses in a school that's for over 3,000 students. This model will also provide a layer, added layer of support for teachers and students through increased instructional support, intervention, student support services, and multi-tiered supports for leading, and increased focus on academic and behavioral accountability. And finally, I'd like to give you a very brief building update. If you have been on the, if you haven't seen, we are in the exciting phase of opening up a brand-new, state-of-the-art field gymnasium in the fall. It's on time to be rolled out. It has about, not about, it has 12 basketball hoops, it has track, it has a long jump pit. There's an opportunity for, for our student athletes to take batting practice and softball and baseball and all of the, all of the sports that we currently run in our, in our, in our current gym will be available there. In addition to a state-of-the-art workout room that fits between, almost, up to about 100, 100 young people, and this would be just something really beneficial to our students. Right now, we've opened our gym after, we've opened our weight room after school, and there's about 30 to 50 students that come and work out every single day. So we'll be able to add more students to this opportunity, and it's a, not just our sports teams, but students who are just coming to get a workout, some teachers come in and get a workout. So our, our new gym is really going to be a part of our overall redesign and reimagining of the high school. So with the culmination of our proposed graduation requirements, Portrait of a Graduate, and building on a high school, I'm really excited about the work that's coming up ahead of us to allow our students to have not only a physical structure that is not, is second to none, but also an educational opportunity inside the school that will allow them to be competitive post-secondary. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm sure I'll stay up for some questions.
Thank you. Any comment, Mr. Rossi?
Thank you, Mr. Fiatto. I love the presentation. It's obvious you spent a lot of time doing that, and my one question I have is, in terms of the math alignment for our students as ma, mass core, are we going to work through the next few years on some remedial courses for our students in terms of math? Because I know that's one area our students struggle in a great deal. So that's one part of my question, actually. Maybe I have two questions. And I just wanted to say, well, you know, seeing how you're integrating the Portrait of a Graduate into all the academics in the course, I just think the civics program is a great lead-up into the Portrait of the Grad, Graduate. So they're really seeing it in middle school and carrying it over through into the high school in lots of different ways, in a lot of different areas that they found an interest in and wanted to learn more about through that. So is there a way that you may be able to integrate some of that? And I know this is a big plan, and it's huge, but I guess those are my two questions. Thank you.
So with regard to your question about math, I, I think we prefer to look at acceleration over remediation, and I know it's easier said than done because it is a challenge, but our students, if we're, if we're really identifying some of those core content that we want our students to know and be able to do, to work closely with what they can do and try to accelerate them so they can take the most advan, advanced courses. What I've learned with remedial courses is that sometimes students get stuck in the, in the remediation, and we don't move to acceleration. So our goal with Portrait of a Graduate and our changes here is to, to create a pathway so that students can take the most advanced courses regardless of where they start in ninth grade, with the opportunity by the time they get into eleventh and twelfth grade and maybe even 10th grade to take those early college classes. Something that I, that I probably should have put in the slide deck is that all of our students in ninth grade, in ninth grade seminar, take an early college, earn an early college credit through their seminar course. We've aligned our coursework with Middlesex Community College for the First Year Experience Course. So all of our ninth graders get a little bit of a taste of what early college looks like. And that's why when, at some point, if I came back and I can share with you, or Dr. Boyd shares with you, some of the growth in our early college program, that's partially due to the one-credit course with our ninth graders. So if we can get our ninth graders excited about their academics and the notion that they can attain college classes while in ninth grade, to answer a question about math, we really want to get them excited about knowing that they can achieve in math. And again, it's easier said than done, but we'll continue to work with our, with our staff to accelerate over remediate.
Mr. Rossi, go ahead.
Did you want me to answer the, the history question?
Yeah.
Civics. Yes, but I, I just want to caution that just from experience alone, sometimes we have to remediate before we can accelerate, and if this is going to be for all of our students, then we can't forget our students who are coming in fundamentals classes in a really low level. And if we want our kids, all of our kids, to do well and accelerate, we need to meet them where they're at and not try to so much focus on acceleration, but meet them where they're at so all students can.
I think we agree then, because we're, we do want to meet our students where we're at, where they're at, and then to be able to move them forward. And with regards to the history, I think social studies is a, there, all of our subject areas need to invol, need to be involved in Portrait of a Graduate, and I think there are some that lend themselves a little bit more naturally like social studies because it's pretty tangible when you can go out and do a civics project. So I, I agree that there's opportunities there to take civics. We have a project at Lowell High School called Generation Citizen, where our students do, do, do engage in community service and address community needs. So that would be kind of a natural segue into Portrait of a Graduate. And then we have our most recent Citizens, Citizens Day, which middle schools and elementary schools and high school participated in. So that's kind of a natural progression with Portrait of a Graduate, as, as will our other courses within the, within the handbook.
You all set, Mr. Rossi?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Thompson?
So I also had two questions, but I will tell you upfront, I have two questions. I guess my first question, and it actually stems from Ms. Del Rossi's. I am not a math-minded person by any stretch of the imagination. I would actually do 10 essays before I do a word problem. So I'm just curious, what is the first-level math that they're starting from, that they're then going to? So what is the first math that they take?
Algebra I.
So it's Algebra I, and then they take geometry, or?
Yeah, so they'll take Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II, but right now, many of our students don't take Algebra II.
Okay.
And it's kind of unfortunate, and we know that Algebra II, whether it's a predictor of success in college, or it's students who take Algebra II, somehow there's, there's a correlation between success in college and the completion of Algebra II classes. So it's, and it's also a math that would lead to a STEM field and lead to advanced math courses. So we do want to get our students to that level, and because of our math requirements, students could take Algebra I and geometry and not have to take Algebra II. So there are levels. So Algebra I does have a college prep level and honors level, advanced levels. So students can have entry points that are, that need that support in the college prep courses and also extend into advanced placement by the time they graduate, and the early college classes, which are available as well.
So then after that would be what, trigonometry and calculus, or?
Pre-calculus, calculus, AP calculus, discrete math. And we also have a number of programming classes. They don't necessarily count for math classes, but they can be taken in conjunction with the math class. That is a prerequisite to get into those programming classes. So the more math classes we give our students, the more access they have to other coursework that are connected to those coursework, like, like coding and programming.
And then my other question, which I don't know if it's really a question that's fair to ask of you, but I'm going to ask it to you anyways, is what are we doing to consider our Latinx population that has been so far behind in graduation requirements in moving forward? There's like such a desperate difference. So what, what is the consideration when you're trying to move this forward in such a kind of a very serious way? What have the considerations been for that population in particular?
There's a few, there's a few areas here. One is, I'm going to continue to work with our graduation, we have a graduation task force, highlighting some of the reasons and root cause, trying to conduct a root cause analysis as to why do some of, many of our Latinos, Latino, Latinx students underperform? What are some of those reasons? The other is working with some community members over the past six months, which resulted in a parent meeting of over 200 Latino families. And I'm going to continue to work with those families because they have some great ideas as to ways in which they would like to be involved, and they've convinced me, and I've always known this, I've worked in another district with 95% Latino, 98% Latino population, and I, I know that no, no, no parent sends their kid to school to fail, regardless of their race, regardless of their background, socioeconomic status. But sometimes when students do come to school, there's significant either learning gaps or attributes that we can continue to help our students recognize. So those are two, two main foci, foci for next year for me, to work with our community to identify where, what are the ways in which we can improve some of these outcomes. But it really does start with building trust. I want to build trust with all of our community members and the fact that we had over 200 families come, parents come, which many people told me that was the best attendance at a, at a, at a family event, especially with our Latinx population that they've ever seen. And it was a concerted effort. It wasn't me, it was me working with networks and bringing in those, those families, and they, they can, and I shared with them the data that you mentioned. And, and I, I had a slideshow and shared the data with the numbers of students that are failing, the numbers of students that are dropping out, the discrepancies, and I think it was an eye-opener. And they were, I think it was, helped us create a call to action. So with, and I, and I can tell you that our teachers work very closely with all of our students to, to help them get through and to and through graduation and into college, but it's going to take a concerted effort. And like I said, we'll continue to do a root cause analysis, work within the community because I don't have all the answers, and every student is different and every community is different, and it's not the same answer for one student as to another. But it really comes down to engagement and making, giving students something to want to come to school for.
Thank you.
You all set? Ms. Thompson? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Through you, I also have two questions. Actually, I, first I want to say that I am excited about us having the gym open before next school year, so I hope that we, we can go visit for the, the debut of the, of the gym opening. When, when you talk about, Mr. Fiatto, when you, when you talk about the portrait, portrait of a graduate, a vision that the Lowell community believes, who are we talking about, the Lowell community?
Oh, that's a good question. So since, I think it started in the 19, 2019, 2020 school year, where the community was surveyed, there was a kind of like a, a community-wide research project that involved different stakeholders from the community that include Lowell High School alumni, businesses, teachers, graduates, students, higher education, and they were asked various questions about what are the competencies that they would like to see Lowell High School students graduate? It was, it was, it was great to hear our alumni say what they, what they appreciated about Lowell High, and also what they felt they wished they learned while they're at Lowell High. And we got that feedback, and over the last three years, we continued to refine those, that feedback through surveys from our students and staff, and also continued to update these within the community. So that's a great question, but it was a community-driven process led by Latifah Phillips and her team, and when I came onboard as the head of school, I also jumped in and became a part of that. And it kind of set the stage for our next steps, but that first step was a survey of the community and ultimately interviewing multiple stakeholders.
Thank you. Thank you. And my, my second question is a little bit off the topic, and, but I apologize for not asking you in person earlier when, when we walked up the stairs, but I'm sure that you will be able to answer this question with no problem. It is about vaping in the, in the bathroom at, in schools. I had been asked about that issues, if we have any problems dealing with it. So do you have any solution to that? I don't know if superintendent or head of school can answer that question to address that.
We've actually invested in vape detectors that'll be first implemented across our high school. Where are we at within that process of implementation?
Just a matter, they're installed, it's just a matter of connecting them to the, they'll be connected to a device, whether it be a phone or a computer, and we'll get an alert when there's vaping happening, and we'll be able to have our security respond. So that's one step in the process. But yes, it's something that I'd just like to speak frankly, it's something that is, is an issue. I think it's a community issue as well as a school issue. It's not unique to Lowell, but it is something that we have to deal with and, and work together on, and, and I'm worried about the long-term implications of vaping and health, health ramifications of our students and young people who are engaging in this type of behavior. But we do have a discipline code, and we do have consequences for students who are caught vaping as well. But I, I don't think we're going to punish our way out of this, but it, that students do have to be held accountable as well for their, for their behavior because it is a violation of a school rule.
So the vape detectors, if the committee thinks back to a generation ago where it was smoking cigarettes in the bathroom, and the smoke detectors were an important, not only deterrent, but monitoring tool within, that, that no longer applies to vaping. It's an entirely different detection system. But during the course of the early part of this school year, during the fall, when we observed what was going on around the country with our students, with challenges with coming back to school and regulating their behavior back in school, particularly at the high school level, we engaged a nationwide consultant to come in and work alongside Mr. Fiatto to assess every aspect of our high school to be proactive here in Lowell. And the consultant alongside Mr. Fiatto, Mr. Skinner, and others came forward and provided us with several recommendations. We've implemented every single one of them in terms of safety and security at our high school, and the vape detectors was one of those recommendations. Based on that implementation, we've also now received requests from our middle schools that, based on the implementation at the high school- that based on the implementation at the high school, once we're up in implementing, and Mr. Fio has a sense on what's required there to operationalize the vape detectors within the code of conduct for monitoring, we then plan to expand that across our schools, much like we do with smoke detectors. Vaping, as you are all, you are absolutely right for bringing that forward as a concern, and for families that are listening within the community. The cartridges that go into a vape pen cannot be detected any differently if it's a substance that could do harm versus the substances that are typically and in some ways perceived as those that could not do harm. So vaping is not allowed within our schools whatsoever, regardless of what it might be advertised to do. We do not allow vaping within our schools any more than we allow cigarettes within our schools. And we ask you to please work with your young people to help them keep those, we ask you first and encourage you not to allow your young people to engage in vaping. But secondarily, we ask you to help monitor and make sure that those, those devices are not being found in the home and then finding their way into our schools. If they are, we do take that quite seriously, and the monitoring of the vape detectors is an added line of deterrent and monitoring from what our schools already do to manage that.
That's wonderful, thank you so much, but I also want to say, middle school? Really? Middle school?
It's a matter of, just like we have with smoke detectors, that's why I use the analogy from a generation ago. We would never stop doing in our middle schools with smoke detectors in our bathrooms, so we're gonna take the added step here. It's a request from our principals that we think is reasonable, based on, again, our experiences a generation ago with smoke detectors. So I don't think you can ever err too far on the side of safety, and this is a significant health concern for our youth these days, which is why I give kind of the public service message. We do have some people attempting to advertise these things to youth as though they are healthy or non-harmful. And we've learned, if you recall, about two or three years ago, there was actually a crisis of the cartridges that were being sold, leading to hospitalization and even death. And that was starting to happen pretty frequently until there were some added mechanisms of monitoring at the government level. Not school, other federal and state government level. So we're gonna, we're gonna do our part to help support our families to keep this health hazard further out of our schools. I think Mr. Fio and his staff are doing incredibly well in terms of managing it, but vape pens look like pens that we write with. It's not so obvious like a pack of cigarette when you see them. What they emit out of the vape pen is not smoke, it's water vapor, so it doesn't get picked up by any type of smell. So there's added steps to be done, and I would say you're certainly seeing it and hearing it in the community, but I want to give a lot of credit to our staff, as difficult as it is to manage, they're doing incredibly good job managing it, and it has come up so that they can do some added additional monitoring. We can bring it back for discussion, but I don't see a downside when you're talking about monitoring and detection of applying it within our middle schools, even if we curb one person from attempting, then we're curbing a habit from forming.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Thank you.
You all set, Mr. Lee? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of comments and questions. So first off, I want to say there's a lot of positive that I heard, that I think we are absolutely moving in the right direction. The, the part about phasing it in, I think, is also important because, especially with the algebra, we need to do a better job at the middle school level of accelerating those kids who are strong in math and making sure they're ready to fly when they get to the high school. So I think we do have to phase that piece of it in. I think focusing on consistency and excellent teaching, absolutely where you need to be. I guess my question on the current work is you talked about using data and that you've reduced dropout, increased graduation rates. What timeline are you comparing it to? Because I know we've had a very difficult time with student disengagement because of this pandemic. So if you're gonna tell me that you reduced the dropout rate and increased the graduation rate, what is that compared to?
I actually have that information off the top of my head, district-wide, Ms. Doherty, because I just quoted this data in a meeting I was just in previously. So from two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the grad, so our graduation rates are reported in lag. So the two thousand twenty-two report that we receive in the winter of two thousand twenty-two is actually for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. So our two thousand twenty-two report, two thousand twenty-one school year, compared to our two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, district-wide was seventy-eight percent to eighty percent, and the single-year dropout rate went from two point seven to one point seven. That's district-wide, large portion of that is attributable to Lowell High School, but district-wide includes students that are also not assigned to Lowell High School. Mr. Fio, if you have the Lowell High School specific, please, please feel free. But that's top ahead, Ms. Doherty, just because of the meeting I was just in where I was asked to share that information. So there's always a lag time, so if you see, and this is important for the committee to know, if you see the statement of two thousand twenty-two report, the DESI two thousand twenty-two report actually refers to not the graduating class we just handed diplomas to, it was last year's graduating class. The same thing goes for the single-year dropout rate that's also provided within that same report. What you'll also see is data around cohort dropout rate that's capturing an entire four years. So we look at a single-year dropout rate because if you had one particular year spike, that'll occur over a course of time. However, within the graduation rate, we look at a four-year cohort graduation rate. So you'll see a multitude of data points coming to you, so I appreciate the question in that way of what report you're looking at. That's always an important part of it. Mr. Fio, did you come prepared with the Lowell High School specific data? It's slightly different just because it's-
Very similar, but I don't have the exact data on, on top in my report, but what I can say is that we did hire a data analyst, and she came as a teacher from another district and has enabled us to really have, to give us real-time data. And the, part of our struggles have been, my struggle in my first year was, how do I know who's failing? How do I know who's passing? How do I know who's missed, who has the most absences? How do I, how do I know which groups are struggling the most? We've been able to create a data studio, very robust data studio, that's shared with our deans and our counselors. We also track graduation data from the beginning of the year, and we, we came up with like a red light, a yellow light, and green light right from the beginning of the year to look at who's in danger of not graduating in this, in this cohort, and what can we do to support them, in addition to working with our current students. We want to backwards map that senior tracking and bring it down to our juniors, sophomores. We're not there yet, but we feel we have the system in place to be able to do that more effectively, given that we have someone with their fingertips on the data, giving us up-to-date. We're pulling the, the data reports from Aspen and putting it to something that's user-friendly. Aspen's great, but it's, it's kind of unwieldy sometimes, so having the, the data studio in front of us. We share, our deans look at their data daily, they work with their house teams to look at attendance, failure rates, suspensions, and we're talking about those, that, that data, every, at every one of our meetings with our department chairs and with our, with our deans. And they work it through with their teams as well. So just having that access to data has been tremendously helpful, because if you don't know what your challenges are, you really can't address those challenges in a purposeful way.
Well, that was very helpful, thank you. And I know with the graduation rate, we also have to keep in mind that MCAS was no longer a requirement through this period. So would you say that the dropout rate has also improved? And that was the same timeframe you're looking at? The two thousand twenty-two report, as you said, was based on two thousand twenty-one. So did we have less dropouts last year than two thousand eighteen?
Two point seven to one point seven is the single-year dropout rate. So we're still, actually, and the reason that the report is lagging is because our team, our re-engagement team, staff at the high school and staff district, at the district level, is still working to re-engage youngsters this year. So the data gets finalized in October. It's based on not just the spring graduates, it's also our summer graduates, they all count within. It gets, so the, the data gets finalized. We do have concerns, as we've shared with the committee and as the committee's been engaged, with the level of engagement of our students and what number of students have been disengaged. And given the fact of those concerns, you're hearing Mr. Fio talk about some of the mechanisms that are put in place with his graduation task force and his data team. So right now, we, we remain concerned, but at the same time, I can report to you, just yesterday, we did have one student who has raised their hand to re-engage that I previously personally met with, and I, I can tell you, no matter what opportunities we were offering, the youngster wasn't looking to take part in those opportunities in the winter. So if you look at the data for this year, the youngster would track as being a dropout at that time, but now that the youngster is scheduled to return to us, is coming back to school, will be participating in our engagement center. Those types of stories occur throughout the course of the summer into the fall. So I'm looking forward to sharing that data with you once it gets finalized for the current, and I'm hopeful that it'll actually continue to improve, but we have some serious concerns based on the engagement levels we've seen across this year.
I would be very much interested in seeing that data at the end of summer school. Another concern, because we had thousands of students, that we changed our requirements around attendance. I'm not talking about excused absences, so what about those students showing up for summer school, and if they don't? And you don't have to tell me now because I want to focus on the high school, but I'll be looking for that data if you want to do it in the fall, at the end of the summer. But to me, I don't want to just say, okay, you can have all these absences and not show up to summer school and get passed along to your next grade, for instance, because I don't think that's serving anyone, the students or the community. But back to you, Mr. Fio. So that was just some questions that jumped out about the work in progress side. In terms of the reorganization, and I don't have strong feelings either way, I'm just curious, as we're looking at the, the way it was done with the, you want to reimagine the dean role, and I understand what you're saying with that, because previously we had department chairs, and they were responsible for the curriculum roadmaps, the quality of teaching happening in science, happening in social studies. So what happens to this reimagining of the dean role to an assistant principal? Are those the same deans gonna just change their title? What's gonna be the difference, and what happens to the, that chair who was doing all those evaluations of teachers and all that? What's the plan for that?
That's a great question. So this is a cost-neutral change, so it doesn't require any additional funding or any additional staffing. It's just, it, it really provides the, the, the dean to transition into an assistant principal role, to be an instructional leader and take ownership of their house office. So they can, an assistant principal can do evaluations. I would consider phasing in evaluations over the course of the year and not come out of the gates having our assistant principals doing evaluations until we norm on, what are the things we're looking for? Let's make sure as a team, as an administrative team, we go into classrooms, we're looking at some of the similar, similar look-for's and really, and do some alignment around our articulation agreements of what good instruction looks like and how we're gonna give feedback to teachers. The department chairs will continue to work in, as coaches, providing curriculum support and providing coaching, coaching model through an, through the observational process. But also as an assistant principal, it's, it's an opportunity to, to take a look, take ownership of your house office. Look at your teachers in your team, take a look at how we're gonna continue to support your teachers, continue to celebrate some of these successes, bring, take ownership of bringing joy and fun with some of the feedback we're getting from our students. They're looking to do more, more school spirit events and ways in which to bring the school together, and a kind of a rebranding of that role. The dean seems sometimes like a heavy-handed, I'm just gonna administer discipline all day. And reimagining the position where it's, yes, you will be doing some of that, but you also have a student support specialist in your house to help you with that. And so as an assistant principal, you can take a more active role in all phases of instructional leadership as opposed to simply just relegating it to discipline.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Just to follow on, on, on that topic. So just trying to understand kind of operationally how this could work. So within A House, just pick up one. There's gonna be a cohort of static teachers that are part of A House, who are the only ones interacting with A House students.
No, 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 that's-
So how does a, how does the dean then evaluate over time performance of these teachers if, if they're constantly shifting?
The teachers still are members, members of a house office, but students are not, students can be in a classroom with students from other house offices as well. So for this, for, for next year, it's an opportunity to take a look at how to infuse instructional leadership with the assist, as an assistant principal, taking ownership of the house office. They still have, every teacher's assigned to a house office, and every student's assigned to a house office. So when we look at data, student performance, it's still, it's still relevant to the students in their house. So it does provide us with a way to break the school down into a small learning community, but it's not, it's not as though they're isolated from other classrooms. It's still, nothing really will change other than the title and expanded opportunities for instructional leadership.
I guess the one, the thing I'm particularly concerned about is this evaluation process. Because if it's, if our, our chair people are shifting from being evaluators of their, their content area and are now only serving as coaches and, and kind of more of a, a content specialist, like that seems like a very dramatic shift in terms of who's responsible for evaluating the performance of those, of those individual teachers within that content area. Like, again, you've got A House, is that A House vice principal now going to be evaluating science teachers, math teachers, English teachers, arts teachers? How is that all gonna kind of function together by pulling out the, the chair people?
So I want to be very clear, the department chairs are gonna continue to evaluate, and the department chairs will, will also continue to coach. The assistant principals, as I said, we really want to phase in any evaluations that take place. It may be very minimal at the beginning of the year and even into the course of the school year until we're insured, until I'm insured, that all of our staff are looking at, are aligned into rated reliability and making sure that we're, we're looking at instruction in a similar way, so there's consistency across the campus, both from our depart, from our department chair team and our assistant principals. It may be very minimal at first, and it will grow into building confidence that all the, all the assistant principals in that role will be able to effectively conduct evaluations. But I'm not going to move forward until I feel we're ready to do that in a fair and equitable manner, and that they're properly calibrated with regards to those look-for's. I, I want to make sure I'm answering your question. So department chairs are gonna continue to evaluate and be responsible for those content areas because a science chair knows science, and a social studies chair knows the standards like anyone else. But, but our assistant principals do understand class management and, and really can be instrumental in going into classrooms and help support teachers with behavior and, and class management. Not necessarily with content, although they do have, we do have department, assistant principal with content background. But they also have some great coaching skills with regards to classroom management. And that's where the intersection between curriculum and instruct, curriculum and, and discipline can take place because, as we all know, a great curriculum is also a great disciplinary tool.
It really does make curriculum sound like punishment, but-
What's that?
It really does make curriculum sound like punishment, but I understand.
Well, I mean, class engagement, if, if there's a strong curriculum, then classroom engagement reduces disciplinary issues. I should have used that term.
You're on it, I get it.
Engagement.
I do think that it's something we're gonna have to pay particular attention to as we, as we move forward.
Absolutely. I agree with you a hundred percent.
I mean, I just think that it's a, you know, evaluating teacher performance is a very challenging thing, obviously, in any environment, and I think it is particularly so in the high school environment.
We're gonna take a tempered approach to that and make sure that it's, we're ready to do that when we jump out of the gates before we engage in any large-scale teacher evaluation. I'm very aware and considerate of going too quickly, but we have to put the pieces in play to be able to start making changes at the high school. And if we look at area high schools, most high schools have assistant principals. Most high schools, some high schools have deans, but some of those positions are kind of lower-level disciplinary and don't involve instructional leadership.
You all set? Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I think it's, just to reinforce Mr. Fio's analysis, this is his second year as, as the head of school. It's my third year as superintendent, and the year immediately prior, DESI did a review of the district, as all of you are aware. So four years ago with DESI, three years ago with myself, then two years ago with Mr. Fio, they've all, all of those analyses have been consistent in saying, we've got to gear our resources at our high school level to target in on instructional improvement. There were different ways that it's been phrased, from when you saw the DESI report to my report to Mr. Fio's, but it's all been targeted around, how do we take the resources that are being invested in that high school and make sure that they are all aligned around supporting the improvement of instructional quality? And that's what he's sharing and working towards with this realignment. It's, none of it's gonna be a one-and-done, each step gets us in that direction. If you recall, with our budget, there's additional positions that are gonna be working and operating within Ms. Desmond's office to further support K through twelve curriculum, because we had previously centrally had been focusing on K eight curriculum with the way that we're designed. So additional curriculum support centrally to also support the full K through twelve continuum, and making sure that all of the good work that's been happening historically at the high school can now be improved and scaled up so that we're supporting all children, every kid who walks through the doors to get the same quality of education that a good many have been receiving historically within our community. good many have been receiving historically within our community. So Mr. Fiatto's analysis of two years is consistent with mine of three years and Desi's from four years ago, and my understanding is, from talking with others throughout our community and in our district, it's consistent with their analysis as well. We've got to make sure that we start to target in all of our resources so that they can support and improve instruction within the classroom.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I just want to thank you, Mr. Fiatto, for coming to the chamber and making a presentation. And I was able to go watch the boys volleyball game a couple of days ago. One of the best game I ever watched, any sports at that level. Please extend a congratulations from all of us, to the players, to the coach, to the athletic director, and of course, to yourself. Great game, fantastic job. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I saw you there. It was a nerve wracking game, and then they gave it there also. Thank you for everyone's support, and we have a good group of young people coming up, so we're going to be competitive for years to come. Thanks a lot.
Wonderful, thank you. We now go to 8.3, the motion responses. Response to motion 03, CSO of 5422 by Ms. Doherty regarding programs to support our younger students with behavior issues. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for this report. I guess this is kind of general, this response, and I was specifically thinking about the tier three, I guess, students, because we used to have a program, and I know it was a pullout, separate program, and it was not successful. And I guess I just want to ask through you to the superintendent, when we talk about the tier three intensive support, I'm not, I'm not hearing anything specific. We, there's a general, they're supporting children, working with various agencies, attempts to provide wraparound support, therapeutic, we know that a lot of these counseling services, they're not, they're not even taking kids, their wait lists are so long. And I guess I would like to address this issue from the context of the mental health support and behavioral supports that we have added. You know, every school was given additional funds for mental health supports and behavioral support. And I, and it's kind of like that disconnect with Aramak, you know? They were telling us the food was great, but yet we were hearing from kids and getting pictures of old food, right? There's a disconnect here from what I, I've been hearing on the street in terms of behaviors, and by street, I mean our frontline people, our staff, teachers, you know, teachers struggling with behaviors, as we all know, the kids had a tough year, our staff had a tough year. You know, the pandemic just worked a number on all of us in different ways, the stresses of it. So I was looking for more specific, like, because we've heard that we've invested in mental health supports and behavior specialists, that every school was given additional funds to bring those staff in. And then on the other hand, I'm hearing that some kids, and you know, one child can disrupt not, not only just the whole classroom, but can take the principal's whole day or the assistant principal's whole day. One child's struggling, and so I, I'm looking for more, like, what are we actually doing? And, and I mean, in this report, it says, in rare cases where tier one and tier two supports are not sufficiently helpful, schools go further. Well, I guess I didn't feel that that was the information I got from our frontline people about the behaviors they were seeing and the supports they were getting. So I was looking for more specifics around this investment that we've made, and how has that played out with what's happening in our schools? And, and so I'm open to, maybe it hasn't been able to fully be implemented this year and there's a plan for next year, but this general discussion didn't really, I think, address the issue and explain it in a way that I could look a teacher in the eye and say, you know, we've provided supports for you, for these kids and for their families.
Any other comments, questions? Just, you want Mr. Superintendent to respond? Mr. Superintendent?
Sure. I think, I'm not sure if you were getting the same feedback that I was during the course of the budgeting, but the specific feedback that was a question about behavioral programming at the elementary level was in regards to whether there's appropriate alternative programs for elementary age students, much like the committee has committed to the bridge program at the middle school level and the career academy at the high school level. The, the committee did, within this last budget proposal that the committee adopted in May, earmarked $2.5 million in ESER for us to implement alternative programming based on our analysis of the needs across the district. We know that our portfolio at the secondary level is too slim for the population we're serving. That was part of the previous conversation about engagement levels at the high school level. We did earmark $2.5 million and we're, we do have open, one of the openings that we have remaining is for our director of our student resource center, as well as some outreach liaisons. Our plan is to bring together that team. It has been posted, we have been working to recruit that position for some time. And then with that analysis, with that team, be able to bring back to the committee the proposal for the use of those funds, because the funds themselves are largely for startup purposes, because we believe that that will enable us as a district to retain students, which means then overall, the operating costs are then covered by the student funds themselves that the students generate each year as, in terms of enrollment. So the committee did earmark $2.5 million. I would actually expect, given the cost of programming and what we're seeing as the needs, once we have the programs defined and finalized, that we may want to increase the investment there, but I hesitate to do that without having a definitive proposal for you, and the first step of that is bringing the team together. But that is a step that the committee took in response to some of the feedback through the budgeting process around alternative programming overall. We did earmark that, that's within a line item in the ESER plan. You'll see it show up in year three. Year three, just as flexibility to say that we're going to have, we don't yet have the planned use of those dollars, they're earmarked, but as the committee knows, you have flexibility across each year, you can use ESER dollars as you see fit across each year. So we earmarked them year three, $2.5 million for alternative programming overall.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Doherty, did you want to say something else? Or I thought you raised your hand. You're done? Are you all set?
I just want to follow that up with, you haven't really addressed the question about the investment we've made in mental health supports and positive behavior support. It's in your presentation that follows about the Student Opportunity Act plan that we have done this, but I don't see where's the evidence that we've done it. We say every school was given additional funds for mental health support and positive behavior support. And I asked for a report about how we're doing that, and I get general statements about it. So I didn't feel that that response answered my question about this investment that we've made, not 2.5 for some alternative program going forward, but the money we already spent and gave our schools for mental health support and behavior support. But I can just.
I will tell you, the data we're tracking is showing significant improvement in our ability to retain students and keep them in school as opposed to out of school suspensions, which used to be the default mechanism for students that were displaying behavioral needs within our schools. So we're seeing in terms of outcomes, the impact is there from these resources, particularly with the needs that we're seeing our youngsters demonstrate. The needs are higher, yet at the same time, resorting to out of school suspension and removing our kids from the school environment, which removes them from services altogether, we're seeing that those decisions have been reduced significantly at the school level with no change in policy or code of conduct and, in most cases, high stability across our administrators who are making those decisions. So that tells us that there's a strong correlation between the investments and the decisions that we've made and the services that are reaching kids. At the same time, I do understand that you're, you're saying that the response to motion is insufficient, but I hope you can leave tonight with at least that data point that says there's an impact from the investments we're making.
If I could just follow up with us one thing.
Sure, Ms. Doherty.
So out of school suspensions has dropped, so you could say that's because students are behaving better, or you could say that's because principals have been told not to suspend students. And you'd have to speak to the teachers who are on the front line saying, I've got, you know, a child who's out of control, and I don't know what to do, I'm not getting the supports I need. So that's where it comes back to, okay, are out of school suspensions like the number of students being held back? Is that because students are really making the progress and meeting the requirements they need at whatever grade? Or is that because we've made a decision, kind of under the radar, we're not failing anybody? This is where the concern is, and this is where my disconnect is. And, and so I'll just leave it at that, but you could look at that data point, we've reduced our number of suspensions, and come up with a couple of different answers for why. Thank you.
If I could make a suggestion of that, and I won't call you again to speak on it, but, you know, if the response wasn't sufficient to capture the skill that you're looking for, maybe you could have a conversation afterward to look to see if you can get more data that you were looking for, or if there's an answer that needs to be clarified with the superintendent, and we can go from there. Thank you. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it regarding to 8.4?
No, it's 8.3, we still at 8.3. Any more comments on 8.3?
I do not have any comment.
Okay, then now we go to 8.4, motion by Mr. Lay regarding dress code policy. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this motion was derived from parents calling me, seeing students on the street and thought that we did not enforce the dress code on a, on a hot day. So by reading this report, I want to thank Mr. Skinner for having a very good detailed report, and by reading this report, I feel that we have been doing a good job in enforcing the code, and therefore, I believe that, so when I reflect back what the parents told me on the phone, I could think that maybe the students maybe had multiple layers of clothing when school's out on a hot day, removed some of the article, and that prompted parents giving me a call. So to the parents, if you're watching out there, I think we have, I feel that we're doing a good job enforcing the dress code inside the school. So thank you, Mrs. Skinner, for a nice report.
No other comments? We go to 8.5, response to motion 9, CFO of 51822 by Ms. Doherty relative to payroll and processing concerns. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you for this report, and I was relieved to see that apparently, the only amount remaining to be recouped was $8,326. I, I don't know where the hundreds of thousands or whatever that huge number was that was being bandied about. I would just hold on to this as, if we do get, are required to come before joint finance subcommittee, I don't know if Ms. Turner wants to explain any of it, but we have it all in writing here, so I'm fine with this, and I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Doherty, if you accept that response, that'd be great. We'll now move to 8.6, response to motion 2, CSO of 31622 by Ms. Thompson regarding enrichment programs and scholarship opportunities. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Skinner, for this report. Really gave all the information about as far as what scholarships are available about the enrichment program, so there's a clear kind of list. I guess my question would be, one, are these lists published somewhere so that parents know about them so they can get their kids involved? And I guess the same question would be, how is there an awareness of the scholarships? So is there a date that's held where all the scholarships are discussed so that the community knows about them, so that they can then have their children apply for them? Or, for example, if I in eighth grade was told, these are potential scholarships that I'd apply for, it might help me to propel me to do better in a certain area or to attain something. So I'm just curious, how, how are these, how are young people, how are parents being made aware of scholarships, about timelines to be able to apply for them and such? Other than that, this is really, really informative.
Through Mr. Superintendent to Mr. Skinner?
I may, if I may say so, I was very pleased myself by the results that we have quite a few programs, right? It's a little bit idiosyncrasy in the sense that some schools can offer something particular because a parent or a teacher has a skill in that area and so forth. But to answer your questions, I did include a link on the report, a link to a district page that lists our after-school programs. There are additional, more specific links on school sites, school websites, like, that describe or show the particular offerings at those schools. As far as the scholarships, again, they only apply at the high school level. Guidance counselors and other staff inform students of the scholarships. More specifics than that, I'm afraid I don't have. I didn't inquire any further, like, what time of year, how exactly are they communicated? I'd be happy to follow up if that would be helpful.
That would be extremely helpful, just because I think that, again, I didn't, when I graduated school, I didn't really know about all the options for me, and I think that it's really important for us to be very clear about options for young people so that they can maybe apply themselves. You know, maybe they want a science scholarship and they realize, man, if I get this grade point average, I can apply for this. So that's all. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Ms. Thompson, that was a good motion, reflecting what I gone through also in high school. I didn't know, I did not always know what scholarship to apply or there, if there, even there exists any scholarship that I could apply. So our high school may be different, it could be more transparent, but I think it would be nice to know that every student here in lower public school knows everything about the scholarship that we have available. So that would be nice to know. Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Thank you.
No other comments? We now go to enrollment report. Any comments or question on enrollment report? Hearing none. I just need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, 8.1 through 8.7, as reports of progress by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Martin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to new business, 9.1 is the budget transfer. Any comments or questions by anyone? Hearing none. I need a motion to approve the budget transfer of $2,234,461 by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Chun. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Could I just ask for a point of clarification?
Sure, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the superintendent, CFO. So this money that we just transferred into the stabilization account, we are, still have access to this money if we need it.
Yes, Ms. Turner?
Yes, as you know, we try our hardest not to leave any money on the table so that we can use this as a way of, it's a strategy. This is a strategy to like mitigate the inevitable impact of the fiscal cliff. If we put the funds in there a couple of years from now, when the ESER does, you know, go away, if, when it dries up, we could use the sped stabilization account to fund more of our special ed costs, freeing up more money to, in other areas. So yes, we still have access, but as, I think I've explained this part before, it would not be where we would take money from the sped stabilization and pay for facilities or teachers. We would use those funds to fund more of our special ed costs.
And use that fund.
Right. And just as a point of clarification, we, we do need to get city council to approve it, but it is our money and we're allowed to accumulate up to 2% of net school spending, which is $5 million. So we've already maximized our revolving accounts. This is the only other way we have of spending why, or like using the money wisely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
No other comments? We now go to 9.2, the early college promise pilot memorandum of understanding. Any comments or question? Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Just a point of clarity here, I'm, rather than recommending approval, I'm going to recommend that the committee accept this as a report of progress, they can see the work. There's only five districts that were invited into this statewide. We just had a conversation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education today. They've, based on their guidance, we're going to make some adjustments to the MOA in collaboration with Middlesex, but they also did advise us, unlike the other plans that they require formal committee votes, they're not going to require a formal committee vote. So this is going to be submitted as a report of progress because we are going to make some additional adjustments based on their guidance today. It's a celebratory opportunity for our young people. I think all of the committees in full agreement with the value of the early college promise program. Many of you met with our youngsters, talked with our youngsters who are involved. So, Mr. Mayor, if you're okay with it, I would submit this as a report of progress rather than requiring committee action, given the adjustments and the guidance we received that it simply requires superintendent's signature. that it simply requires superintendent's signature.
No other comments? Just need a motion to accept this report as a report of progress by Ms. Mon, second by Mr. Rossi. We don't need a roll call on this one. On the favor of the eye, the post say no. The eyes have it. Motion's carry. 9.3, Student Opportunity Act Plan. Any comment or questions by anyone? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Doherty. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
9.4, Approval of Job Descriptions and Permissions to Post of New Positions Previously Approved in the Fiscal Year. 23 Budget Adoption. Any comments or questions by anyone? Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to put forward as an option for my colleagues to consider if we would want to shift this, the discussion of these different positions to a Personnel Subcommittee. Would give us an opportunity to kind of go over all the new positions that have been discussed. We do have the time right now. We're going into July. So I would, I guess, make that as a motion and see if anyone...
Motion by Ms. Mon to refer to the Personnel Subcommittee, second by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Doherty?
I would just like to say, if not, we're going to have to go through every position tonight because I have questions and concerns about all of them. It's 8:20. I think it really is better suited to go to a Personnel Subcommittee than go through each one right now.
So I do agree with that. Mr. Superintendent?
Well, on Personnel, you have to include me.
I just want to make sure that I advise the committee, particularly our new members. So there's an added step within our policies for each of the job descriptions here that other committees and other communities don't have. So given this environment, I just want to make sure that the committee's aware so you can put forward any of these jobs that you want posted. July 1 is our hiring authority that every committee and every school district will have. So most school districts are posting their jobs that were approved within their budget, and then they're hiring on July 1. Your next opportunity to approve is July 13, I believe, which means they won't be posted until then, which means you're not going to be hiring until August, which is shortly before the school year. So many of these, if you look at the list of positions, are school-based positions that have been discussed. I might put to the committee, I mean, you've got lunch monitors, library instructional teachers, building-based substitutes. These jobs have actually already been discussed and negotiated, those that are affiliated with also our union partners. So any adjustments that the committee might even suggest would then have to also go back to the negotiating table with our union partners. So one opportunity could be all affiliated positions the committee might take in one discussion, and then we could bring back to you unaffiliated positions, which have a little bit more flexibility. It is standard and is typical for the committee to review job descriptions in the Personnel Subcommittee. The difference here is the hiring window that we have and the fact that these were just approved within the budget and the fact of the staffing shortages that are in front of you. So I leave that to the committee for your decision. I just want to make sure I advise you of the risks that are incurred. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or question? Mr. Lay?
I want to take that recommendation. At least we can get the affiliated and moving.
Any other comments? I understand this is a motion. Before I say something, I just want to give the members opportunity to make any more comments or question. Does anyone else have a comment? If none, I would like to ask Mr. Superintendent. Oh, yeah, question. Go ahead, Ms. Mon.
I'd just like to say, I can appreciate the timeline. Our budget wrapped up in May. You know, being presented with this during our final meeting in June, that is not on this committee. I understand life is life, and I'm not, you know... I'm not trying to be a jerk about it. But when things get presented to us at the last minute, then we have no, you know, being backed into a corner of, if you don't do this, we're not going to be able to hire anyone until September 1st. It's not a fair... I understand this. I'm just telling you my reaction, my challenge in all this. To be told that we don't have time to be thoughtful and consider these positions, to me is not a compelling argument. So what I would say is that perhaps we can work together and say that if this committee would want to empower the Subcommittee to make final decisions, they can do that. If we want to, it's up to... Or if we want to schedule an additional meeting, I am available for that as well. But I just think that, you know, too little, too late is just not enough of an argument to get me to the point where I'm willing to give up the opportunity and the responsibility of reviewing these things.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Mon, for that comment. Mr. Superintendent, I understand the posting windows are July 1 and July 13. When would be the latest the Subcommittee can meet in order to meet the posting date, to qualify for the posting date of July 1?
Yeah, so it's... As soon as they're approved by the committee, we can go through the process of hiring. So we typically will post these as pending funding or anticipated. We'll post them that way so we can advertise them. But we actually then have to go and engage in an interview process for all the positions, then offer them out, conduct reference checks and so on. So we can officially engage in the hiring process based on our local policies until this subsequent action is taken. So, Mr. Mayor, the answer is a little bit ambiguous here. It depends on when the committee approves them. Whenever the committee approves them, we then move forward with the interviews, following it depending on which candidates we get. We then conduct background checks, and then we go through the hiring. So there's a significant step after this. The timeline here is it requires a significant amount of time versus the committee's authorization in the approval of the budget to engage our bargaining units around the authorization of funds to develop these. This was actually... I was happy to be able to get them on the agenda, but this was actually past our noon deadline, and I called the mayor, and he and I had a conversation in the evening of Friday because we finally got the authorization from our bargaining units on several of these that there are agreement. So it's an added step within the policies that I do want to respect. I just want to also advise the committee that many communities are not. This is a very difficult staffing timeline that we expect this summer, a difficult staffing environment. So it's just whatever the committee determines and decides, I'm fairly confident with the agreement on the union and what I've gotten in feedback before that there will likely be some feedback, but there's going to be added steps there because then I need to go back to the bargaining units for anything that's affiliated. They may or may not accept what the committee wants to bring back in terms of feedback. So it's not a simple... I can move forward as quickly as I have authorization from the committee. You saw from budget authorization mid-May to get it to you mid-June, this is what it took to get these things to you here. So subsequent to, based on the feedback, it's going to take an extended window there, and I can't, I'm not authorized to hire anybody until you give me the authorization to do so. Building-based substitutes. The library teachers is our library initiative to get teachers within. We've got other bargaining requirements within our compendium process because these are union-affiliated. So that's what I'm working with, and that's probably as clear-cut an answer as I can provide to you. I'm sorry, Mayor, that it's not so straightforward. It's just, these are, in a labor environment such as we're in, there's significant steps to go through a process of posting and hiring based on our collective bargaining agreements.
Sure. You are right. I'm just still unclear to approve tonight versus... And then this whole approval or the discussion for more information hinges on... I'm looking at July 1. I know you're giving two dates, July 1 and July 13. And I'm trying to make sure that you would also have enough time after the Subcommittee meeting. So approving tonight versus next week?
That would work, Mr. Mayor. So the recommendation to authorize the Subcommittee to approve, that gives you more flexibility as a committee. Certainly, I think that could work. To delay it till July 13 for approval, that's, I would highly encourage that we look at it a little bit more aggressively. But if that's an in-between and a compromise to authorize the Subcommittee to have full approval, again, this is only by virtue of the school committee's policy. So you have full authority here on this. I think that could work, Mr. Mayor, as Ms. Martin's suggestion to authorize the Personnel Subcommittee. It also tend, we tend to be more nimble in being able to schedule those as well.
Sounds like we have two motions to address, but before we take on this motion, I just want to make sure we've got on the same page here and have everyone have an opportunity to speak. Ms. Thompson?
I just want to, I want us to make sure that that's possible. But my other offering would be potentially having a full committee meeting through Zoom next week. And I know, we'll figure, we'll figure out if we'll have to ask Mr. Gary because I'm aware that our lovely person will not be here. But to potentially have a full Zoom meeting where the decision could be made next week at some point. Then that would make a motion to that effect.
Ms. Doherty?
Your Honor, again, I think that this puts us in a very difficult position. We're being required to add another meeting and then add another meeting because we didn't get proper time to review the material